Welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, November 14, 2017. And I call the meeting to order. All call please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Present.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Seisani?
Here.
Okay. Adoption of the agenda. Anyone wants to make any changes?
I do not.
Including the members of the audience? Anybody wants to change anything? No? Okay. We have a new commissioner here, Pamela Seisani.
I'd like to motion that we adopt the agenda.
Oh, we adopt the agenda first. Okay. Got ahead of my time. Okay. Who wants to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes, I just made a motion to adopt tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll welcome and introduce our new commissioner Pamela Seisani. Is that you?
Pamela Seisani.
Pamela Seisani. Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Say your things about yourself or like to hear.
No, not really. I mean, I just, you know, I've lived in Brisbane for eight years. I'm a practicing attorney and I'm looking forward to volunteering my time here and working with you all and to just serve the community in general, so.
Thank you.
It was really great working with you on the Citizens Committee and I'm very pleased to have you here on the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to say?
I'd like to welcome Pamela as well and I know that she has a tremendous attention to detail and she's a very tenacious hard worker, so I think she'll be a great addition.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you all.
You spell your name is Pamela, right?
Pamela, yes.
Pamela, okay. Consent calendar. If you have two items on that, approval of draft action minutes. And please note the items listed here as consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adapting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it prior to the motion. The chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. So I'm formally asking all of you.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Anyone?
I don't have anything to remove. I just wanted to point out that I wasn't present on September 26th, so when I vote aye, I'm only referring to the meeting of October 10.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wants to remove or add or anything to this? No? Okay, so we have a motion to, we will have a one motion to approve the draft action minutes. You were absent on September 26th, right?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the draft action minutes of September 26 and October 10, 2017, regular meetings.
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so I'll just abstain then.
Yeah, you are. You clapped on. Oral communications. At this time, anyone in the audience wants to say anything to the commission? You're welcome to come forward. None? Okay, I want to make a little statement here. It has come to my attention that someone is spreading a rumor that I have been under investigation and indicted. This is not true and it is an effort to my reputation. I have served the city for 20 years and I want to make it very clear that this is not true and that I have alerted my attorney and that all past and future implication made by anyone will consider the defamation and I refer to my attorney. But I want to make really clear that this rumor is absolutely false and should not be propagated. I'm very serious about it and thank you all. Okay, with that, we move on to the written communication. I got two documents here, one from the Stice block. And this has to do with the agenda item J1, which is in the back. Zoning and tax confirmation with Brisbane General Plan. And the other one is Bay Area Monitor. Anyone of you would like to look at that? I will pass it around. And this is called HIP News, Home, Heart and Hope. H I P News. Again, if you'd like to look at it, here it is. Okay, with that, we start with the new business. Today we have item number one on the new business is public hearing. 515 Tunnel Avenue, C1 District, Use Permit UP-7-17. Temporary Christmas Tree Storage for Recycling, Bread, Deodorant, Ecology Properties Inc., applicant Senator Phil Company. Owner is APN number is 005-152-330. Welcome again. This is the 20th time I've seen you coming here.
Nice to see you too.
Good to see you for the 15th time.
No, you can do it. I'm sorry to say that. Yeah, I guess anybody, anybody in the, you'll open up a public hearing. Anyone wants to say anything?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
For the sake of our new commissioner, could you just say what you do with that whole biofuel thingy?
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic, sir? Thank you. And also state your name.
Is the mic on? It's not on, I don't think.
Hi, my name's Brad Darda and I'm the Environmental Manager at Recology in San Francisco. And every year around this time, we make preparations to receive the Christmas trees after people are done with them. And we grind them in our big materials recovery facility inside where we grind, regularly grind wood that we pull out for recycling. It's burned at a biomass plant in the valley to make electricity.
Great.
It's a win-win situation.
It's a lot better than the alternatives.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. We'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the, wants to say anything about this?
Well, I just had one quick question. I know you've been doing this for eight years and it says here that there's never, you've never received any complaints. I just want to make sure there's also never been any safety issues or accidents associated with the projects?
No.
Okay, great.
It just smells like Christmas trees. Six weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone in the public wants to say anything about this? Okay, want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Item number two, the public.
I'd like to move that we grant use permit UP-17.
Yes, yes.
The temporary Christmas.
Yes, I'm kind of rushing today.
APN 005-152-330.
Okay. We have a motion and.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
One more time. I don't know whether I'll see you next year or not, but. Okay, we'll move to public hearing on 805 Sierra Point Road, R-1 District, grading review, EX-7-17. And it has to do with 445 cubic yards of combined soil cut and fill, including 272 cubic yards of soil export to accommodate construction of a new 3,723 square foot single-family home with attached 966 square foot accessory dwelling unit on a vacant 6,621 square foot lot. Mark B Lee is an applicant, JL Homeland Development Group, LLC owner, and application number is 007-522-200. And I had to excuse myself because I'm within the circle of influence, so you're going to take over.
Yep, very good. Understand there's a staff report.
Yes, sir. So, good evening commissioners. So the request before you tonight is for grading permit review. This is for the construction of a new single-family home with an attached accessory dwelling unit on a lot that's currently vacant. I want to note that there was a previous application submitted for a variance to the height limit. This application has been withdrawn and the project has been redesigned to comply with the height limit. That redesign has necessitated the grading permit review before you this evening. So again, the overall request is for 445 cubic yards of combined soil cut and fill on this site. 272 cubic yards of soil will be exported. So just to orient you to the site, it's a little difficult to see from the street. This is a flag-shaped lot, so from Sierra Point Road, you can see a very narrow driveway area. It's actually most visible from Firth Park. So it's basically located right behind 807 Sierra Point. Here's some photos of the site. As you can see, there's a retaining wall that's been constructed under a previously issued permit, basically to allow site access to the larger portion of the site from Sierra Point Road. Here's some additional photos. So again, this property is flanked on both sides by developed lots. 207 Lake roughly towards the east and 807 Sierra Point to the west. This is also abutted by 843 Sierra Point Road to the rear. So the applicant's grading plans basically indicate the general area of the proposed majority of cut on the site in the steeper portion of this property. Some amount of fill is also proposed to provide a parking pad as well as fill in the driveway. So this diagram shows the location of the proposed site retaining walls. So you saw one already, again, at the driveway. An additional wall is proposed to retain the parking pad area at the front of the home. And there are also small walls proposed in the north and south side yards. Also indicated on this plan, and I think in more detail, may not be able to see it in the detail there, but it's, the drainage system is also called out on this sheet as a French drain around the perimeter of the structure. I also want to point out on this sheet, there is indicated along the driveway, oops, my little button is not working, there are three trees that were previously removed, again, associated with the driveway work. These trees were protected under Title 12 of our ordinance by their size. So as a condition of approval in this permit, those trees would be required to be replaced. That's under condition of approval 8.1. So here are some details of the walls themselves. So again, you can see the walls that are proposed in the north and south side yards as well as the front yard retaining the parking pad. At the tallest point, the retaining wall at the parking pad would be about five and a half feet above finished grade. The other walls would range in height from anywhere from a half foot to almost five feet. And this is all measured from the interior of the site where the grade is actually lower. As seen from adjacent properties, so the highest point of adjacent grade measured from adjacent properties, they would not exceed more than either flush with grade or about a half foot above grade. So the findings for approving the grading permit review.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you go back to the previous diagram? Since we are only talking about grading tonight, I haven't, we didn't receive these diagrams and I'm not quite sure what I'm seeing here. There's the dotted lines represents the limits of the grading, correct? And then on the left-hand side, there are some other double lines. Is that the edge of the building or?
So these are the plans that were attached to the agenda report. So nothing.
If I have some here.
So, and the applicant can speak a little bit more to how he's shown the diagram basically of, the dotted line that you're referring to, that's marked in some places with a red X. That's actually a diagram that they prepared for our height measurement standards. So as you know, when we measure building height, we measure it five feet from the building wall at the point of either existing grade or if it's resulting from fill, natural grade. So that dotted line is really, it's just indicating the points where we're measuring grade to determine height.
That's under architects' plans, right?
And where did you find, oh, there's another link?
Yes.
Okay. My mistake.
That's okay. So that's the dotted line. It really, it's associated with the grading in that the grading plan is determining those finished grades. But that dotted line doesn't actually indicate the extent of soil operations.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, that wasn't more clear.
Right, right. Okay, and so then just inside the dotted line, that's the border of the house and?
Sure. So what's being shown on this plan, again, it's a retaining wall diagram. So roughly, if you want to look back at the site plan, that might be a little bit easier. So the site plan is showing the footprint of the structure as well as the proposed retaining walls. This excerpt I put on the presentation is from their, the additional civil sheet they had that shows the actual top and bottom of wall elevations for retaining walls as well as the retaining wall details.
Okay, and can you explain the side setback? Like what is, what is the clearance and the requirements there?
Sure. So the setback requirements apply to structures, so the home itself, if there was a detached accessory structure, et cetera, that's what would apply to setbacks. We do not prohibit retaining walls within setbacks. Is that, want me to move on or?
Yes, so what is, in any event, the side setbacks are more than five feet and conforming and that's why we're just doing grading?
Sure. So the project data table, which is attached to staff report, shows the proposed setbacks for the structure, which I believe are five feet on the property line adjacent to 807 Sierra Point and five foot 11 to the property line adjacent to 207 Lake, so.
Okay, great, thanks. I'm sorry I didn't.
That's okay.
See those, the diagrams.
Okay. So in order to recommend approval of this permit to the city engineer, the commission many years ago adopted these guidelines to guide your review based on the applicable general plan policies. So the first guideline is that the grading is minimized and reflects or fits comfortably within the natural topography of the site. So in our analysis, we found that the proposed grading is the minimum necessary to accommodate the proposed structure on the site considering its cross slope as well as the 28-foot height limit. And also to accommodate the required onsite parking. The second finding is that the proposed grading avoids large exposed retaining walls. This would be met by the project. All proposed walls are less than six feet in height, measured from the lowest point of adjacent grade. So again, those walls would be in the north and south side yards as well as the front yard. The walls, the highest wall would be about five and a half feet and that would be at the parking pad. While the municipal code does allow retaining walls within setbacks, in any case, and if they're over six feet in height specifically, we would allow it with screening or changing of texture, we're recommending, in condition of approval 8.1, that additional screening be provided for the driveway retaining wall primarily because of its visibility from Firth Park. So even though it's not quite meeting that height standard, we're recommending it for aesthetic purposes. The last finding that applies to this project is that the grading will conserve any existing protected trees under our ordinance. So as I previously mentioned, there were three trees removed from the site. The condition of approval in your resolution, 8.1, would require replacement of those trees at a one-to-one ratio with drought tolerant species, non-invasive, they're appropriate to the context of that site. We also offered another option in that condition for payment of an in-loofe fee for replacement trees to be planted in the vicinity of this property, perhaps in Firth Park, again, to provide for some additional screening considering the, you know, how close, you know, for, the visibility from Firth Park is, you know, pretty open right now. So you might want to consider whether additional landscaping in the actual park might be appropriate, subject to the city engineer's approval, of course. So with that, staff's recommending conditional approval, recommendation of city engineer issuance of the grading permit by adoption of the resolution, subject to the findings and conditions contained therein. And I can answer any additional questions.
I have a question and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask now. I do recall a neighbor sending correspondence to the commission with regard to this project and requesting a meeting with the property owner. Does staff know if that has actually taken place?
So the person who had written the letter, she has not submitted a new comment letter. The applicant can speak to his conversations with her, but, but she was noticed of the hearing and has not provided any new written correspondence.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cunningham, do you have?
I do. So that wall that is facing Firth Park, Julia, what are we recommending for screening? Because that is, I mean, that, for the enjoyment of the people in the park, taking away any green is kind of losing, since it's a small park. So what are we, what are we suggesting now?
We haven't suggested specific species. So for the wall itself, typically the screening materials we see are like climbing plants or vines, something that's, they're pretty hardy, drought resistant, can actually like provide almost a green wall effect. That's typically what applicants will go for. So if you wanted to propose a specific type, you know, of whether it be a shrub or a vine or whatever, if you have a certain vision in mind, you could certainly do so and revise the resolution. For the trees themselves, which would have to be replaced regardless, again, we're not proposing any specific species. We do require they be non-invasive, drought tolerant, which kind of narrows it down to a certain class at least.
What are the trees that are already in the park? Because they seem to do really well.
We have a mix of, there's a lot of eucalyptus, which as we know, not, we would not be replanting eucalyptus. We can, I think at this point, if that's the option that the applicant wants to consider, they would work with the city engineer. The city engineer has an approved list of trees that are planted typically in the public right-of-way that meet our criteria for, again, drought resistant, non-invasive. So unless you guys did have something specific in mind, you might just let the city engineer and the applicant think about that and see what would be most appropriate.
And the bay trees are really pretty and they're drought resistant and they're real, and they take 100 years to get really big. So if somebody's trimming them, I mean, they're pretty and they're useful and they're edible. So, I mean, I'm not married to anything, it's just, you know, keeping it pretty and.
If you want to suggest that as a modification to the resolution that, you know, should an in-lofe be accepted, that you would recommend the city engineer require bay trees specifically as a species, you could do that.
Just, just a suggestion, it's not.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I don't, thanks.
And Commissioner Seisani, do you have any questions?
No, not, not at this time.
Or do you have more?
I was just going to suggest that the retaining wall in terms of vines or shrubs or coverage, I can't remember the form of seaanothus, which is a native. There is one form that can grow to some heights, might be appropriate there because I did visit the site and the lighting, it would probably thrive, requires very little trimming, pruning, or care. Very, very drought resistant. What is it? Seaanothus? You see it planted throughout the city, between the sidewalk and the street, gets the little lilac flowers, has a dark green, very small leaf.
Right, okay. Maybe that's pretty.
I have a couple of questions. Just for the sake of history, I was wondering when was the pre-removal permit done?
There, the applicant can speak more to process. I believe we looked at the driveway permit in the spring of this year. With the understanding that a building permit would be forthcoming.
And I also have a question about the city's requirements for tree replacement. Is there any stipulation that it's like-for-like or anything of that nature, like someone could take out an oak tree and put in a dwarf lemon?
So in Title 12 itself, there are no specified requirements that replacement trees be in kind. I think as a general best practice, we, again, we have certain standards that they be natives or at least not invasive, drought tolerant. It's been suggested in the past that when you guys review these types of applications, that the replacement trees be of similar size at maturity as the trees that were removed and that's certainly within your discretion. But no, there's nothing in Title 12 itself that says these are exactly the types of trees that must be replaced.
Right, I would like to see like-for-like at maturity because the trees that were replaced were, were very large and looking around at Firth Park, it looks like there's room for a couple of really large trees in the existing gaps. And because the applicant's plan, the house takes up a very large percentage of the lot and I don't know if that leaves room for another large tree on the, on the.
Which is why we suggested, right, that that be accommodated if at, when the landscape designer, you know, makes a proposal, if we want mature trees.
Right, I would just say that I would rather see all four trees off lot rather than making a compromise and just putting a silly small tree. I mean, I'm sure they would like to put some small trees in their yard as well, but I would.
Well, they do have landscaping requirements, they'd have to meet that or minimum.
Absolutely, and I think that's a great idea, but in terms of replacing the trees that they took out, I would like to see large, larger species similar to what they took out.
Again, if that's something you want to add to your resolution, that's certainly something you could do.
All right, I'll just recommend that and we can discuss it at the end. Are we ready to open for public testimony? The applicant or the applicant's representative like to start us off.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lee and I'm the architect on the job. I'm with Lee J. Architecture. I'm here with the owner, Jimmy Lee, and with the contractor, Mike Folds, so we can answer any questions that you have. The project itself has been really quite interesting.
Could you get a little closer to the mic?
Sure. I don't want to get loud too.
I know, right.
It's been interesting because of the program requirements by the owner and having the accessory dwelling unit within the project has developed a taller home. And one of the ultimate goals was to find the balance between the height and the grading. And we really wanted to accomplish both ultimately in doing it. We came really close, we can't do both. And that's one of the biggest problems, that we either had to get a height variance or we had to go down deeper into the, into the soil. We were able to accomplish the grading conditions that are required by the city, but we would have had to get a height variance for essentially two feet over a very small portion of the home. But some of the neighbors were questioning it, which is understandable, as well as there could be conditions of mooring the ceilings into the unit and we couldn't, we didn't want to live with eight-foot ceilings in all, in all the rooms. And so we decided not to go that direction and dropped the house down two feet, which created the additional soil that we wouldn't have had to have in doing it. So that's essentially what created, but there was also value to that too, in the sense that it dropped all the retaining walls down on the site too. And so it lowered everything on the project, which, and it lowered the entire house two feet. So not only are we getting the benefit of not having to have height, we lowered the whole house to the neighborhood by two feet. So it's, and that actually an advantage overall to the whole neighborhood. There are very minimal retaining walls surrounding the house because otherwise the dirt would have gone above the second floor level, which had been extremely tall retaining walls inside. So we had to put some smaller step retaining walls on the outside and that's why we did that. But, but overall, it is, it's a really balanced solution to combine the height with, with the grading. And we feel we've done a very, you know, good job trying to get to that point. The other issues, we tell you, I've heard some questions about retaining wall and screening. I don't think there's any question about doing plantings along that wall. It is a narrow area, trees right in front would probably not be the best location, maybe further down. And I think one of the things that the landscape plan is deferred at this point in time and will be worked out with the city before, you know, permitting, which is required for this. And we can work out with the conditions of the trees and things of that nature on the site. You know, there are trees, I don't know of like and kind, but they were eucalyptuses and I hear you don't want to use eucalyptuses, so we can come up with another option and maybe get some more mature box trees or something in that thing, which is not outrageously that thing, which is not outrageously expensive, but it's still within things, I think, that you're trying to accomplish. And same thing with the little hole with the greening of the wall, which is very simple to do with, you know, creeping, some kind of plant that could work, and that's somewhat drought tolerant, can go along that, and would be a good feature for the home, and it'd actually be an improvement with the home, too. So, I don't think there's any issues with that. The conditions, I don't see anything in the conditions that is a negative to me, or to the client in dealing with it, and we're positive with, you know, it's been really good working with Julia, and we've tried very hard to make this thing work, and find the balance, and still keep the client happy, and I think we've been able to accomplish that. If there's any questions, I, oh, there was a question about the tree removal, and the time there was a tree permit removal approved for the project.
I was just curious when that came out.
Excuse me?
I was just curious when that was done. Spring, spring's close enough. Commissioner Cunningham, did you have any questions?
Yes, did you have, in fact, have a meeting with the neighbor who expressed some concerns?
The issue was with the height variance, and when we withdrew our application, then that kind of went away, and it wasn't necessary. So, with the grading, we actually made it, I feel, an improvement, and even made it better for that individual. And one of the things I want to stress on this is granted that your measurements for cross slopes is front to back, there's actually a true 22% grade, cross grade on the site, which is what made it very difficult to accomplish the thing. So, there's really an over 20% grade that, but we couldn't deal with that, because it's not part of the ordinance. We have other features in the area where we're using previous driveway materials and things of that nature, we're capturing all the roof water, concentrating it down, not putting it on the site, all those kind of things. So, it's making all the efforts on this.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cunningham, did you have questions?
Just the rainwater thing just brought up something, you know, many of us in town are capturing our rain and reusing it in the summertime. Is there any maybe thought or any room?
Well, actually, we're connecting to the city storm drain system for this, but we're not dropping it onto the site itself. And one of the things, I was going to use a dispersal system on the site, but that's not acceptable to the city public works. So, to contain it, and I'm doing my own house right now, too, and to contain it for the amount of, you'd have to have almost a 10,000 gallon tank on site, and that's 12 feet deep, and it's almost impossible to find a location for that, because you have to plan for the 200-year rains, and it goes on and on, and it's very, very complex to do. So, we would like to not to do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Psison?
No questions.
Okay, I have no further questions. I guess we didn't collect any cards. I'll just ask if anyone from the audience would like to come up, and audience member who may or may not be married to me would like to address the commission.
I was just perplexed by something I just heard, and I don't understand why capturing rainwater requires a 10,000 gallon tank. I mean, isn't there a happy medium? Couldn't we, I mean, if they were interested, or the commission was interested, or the city was interested, what's wrong with a 3,000 gallon tank? I don't understand why it's 100% of what comes off the roof or nothing. That just was very perplexing to me. So, I don't know if you guys want to pursue that or not, but that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Mark Lee again.
Yes.
Part of it is based upon the Public Health Department requirements, and their ability to use it, and how you use it, and some of the things, for example, on driveways, they don't want you to capture those areas because it has oil base, and then they don't want it to be reused onto your site, et cetera. So, but it is essentially, at least in my jurisdiction, I'm assuming that some of the same things apply, is that the Health Department does control it, and they do, and at least in my jurisdiction, they do require it is 100% contained, if you do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone else wish to address the commission on this matter? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone have any further discussion?
No, since this is a grading permit, and that's all we're discussing, really.
All right, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Sorry, through the chair, did you want to modify the resolution as you had stated prior?
Oh, yes, we should probably, let me check my notes.
Okay.
We didn't have a lot of notes. We just had screening of the retaining wall as a recommendation.
It's in 8.1 already. So, I guess, so my notes said the like-for-like.
Yeah, we had a recommendation of placing trees of similar size to the ones that were removed, all off-site, if trees of that size cannot be accommodated on-site. Recommend two in Firth Park is what seems to be relevant, but in short, to work with the city planners to come up with a suitable plan for tree replacement. Did we have any other suggestions?
No, it was just, you know, finding something that was really suitable for the screening that really did do a good screen.
Suggested bay trees as a possible possibility.
Seaanothis.
Right, the seaanothis, I got that.
Small, yeah, small bay trees get very green very quickly.
We didn't really have any specific recommendations, other than to continue to work with staff, but thank you for recording that. All right, now can we have a motion?
Yes, so I will move to approve Project 805 Sierra Point Road, R-1 Residential District, EX-7-17, grading review for 445 cubic yards and combined soil cut and fill, including 272 cubic yards of soil export to accommodate construction of a new 3,723 square foot single-family home with attached 966 square foot accessory dwelling unit on a vacant 6,621 square foot lot. Mark B. Lee, applicant, JL Homeland Development Group, LLC, owner, APN 007-522-200.
All right, can I have a second?
I'll second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You only need to read the numbers at the beginning, and they.
Oh, okay.
But very thorough.
Okay.
All right, so we'll take a break, as Julia retrieves. Commissioner Munir, he will take over the meeting. And actually, we're going to trade, because I have to recuse myself for the next matter.
I agree. So, I just read this part.
Thank you, boys.
You're welcome. I'll be back later. Thank you.
We resume again. Everything went okay? Okay. Okay, we are down to up. Get some water. Everybody wants water?
No, thank you.
Karen, you want some water?
No, I've got my brew. Thank you.
Got my timing wrong, I'm back for the time being.
Okay, we are on the item number three, Public Hearings 255 Mendocino Street, R-1 District, grading review, EX-9-17, grading review for 245 cubic yards of combined soil cut and fill, including 185 cubic yards of soil export to accommodate construction of a 3,722 square foot single-family home with, on a 5,230 square foot lot. Adam Biddle, applicant, Christopher J. Werwick, TR, and Emily A., it should be TR or JR? TR. Emily A. Werwick, TR, owners, APN 007-332-290. Staff report, please.
And at this time, I need to recuse myself, because I own property within 500 feet of the applicant.
Okay, it's your turn now.
Yes. Now I shall depart.
Please return.
All right, good evening, Chair. So, the application before you tonight is for grading permit review. This is for 245 cubic yards of combined soil cut and fill, including 185 cubic yards of soil export, to allow demolition of an existing single-family home on this lot, and construction of a new single-family home with an attached garage. So, again, just to orient you to the site, this site's on the 200 block of Mendocino, in between San Bruno and Visitation. And here's some current site photos showing the existing carport attached to a single-family home. And this is an interestingly shaped lot, and I will note as well, there's an easement along the side of this property benefiting the property owner to the, benefiting the property owner at 265 Mendocino. All the proposed work in this project is respectful of the bounds of that easement, so just a note there. So, here's the applicant's proposed grading plan, indicating the proposed finished grades. So, essentially, what the, probably the better diagram to talk with you guys about is this. So, these site sections show the approximate depth of the cut that's proposed. So, essentially, the applicant is going to remove at most about two feet of soil from the site, and the applicant can walk you through a little bit more as to their design considerations, but it's essentially to provide for a level pad, and allow for not only the living space they're looking for, but also an elevator element that complies with our height limit. There are no new retaining walls proposed in the grading plan. So, an existing, there's an existing wall at the rear of this property, which is where the slope is the greatest. You know, it's a relatively flat site, but the slope is higher at the rear of the property, and there is an existing wall. And the applicant's indicated that wall will be maintained and repaired, essentially the areas of the property to the, in the side yard where the existing residence is, which actually encroaches in the side or rear setback, will be largely left at the, at its current grades. So, adjacent to property lines, the applicant does not anticipate changing the grades significantly, it's more so in the location of the footprint of the home. So, in regards to the required findings, to recommend approval of this permit to the city engineer, the first being regarding the proposed grading is minimized and designed to fit or reflect, or fit comfortably with the natural topography. So, this, again, this is a relatively flat lot, it does have a gentle rise, so this would essentially make it a truly flat lot. It would result in a slightly lower building profile, as seen from adjacent properties to the sides and also up slope, and it would essentially be the minimum required to create that level building pad that the applicant is seeking. And the second finding is that the design would avoid large exposed retaining walls. So, again, no new retaining walls are proposed in this plan. The existing wall is less than four feet in exposed height from grades located at the rear property line, which would be maintained and repaired, as indicated. The last finding pertains to conservation of protected trees. So, this applicant did receive a tree removal permit earlier this year for four trees on this property that were protected due to their size, and a couple by their species. So, as the conditions of that tree removal permit, and also embedded in the conditions of approval in the resolution before you tonight, we're requiring that three of those trees be replaced. The fourth tree was an invasive, it was an acacia. So, we're not requiring replacement of that. But, so the tree removal permit required three replacement trees, so that's also required in your draft resolution before you tonight, that those trees be accommodated on-site, and that they be drought tolerant, non-invasive, as our typical guidelines require. So, with that, staff is recommending conditional approval of the project by adoption of the draft resolution, and at this time, I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Mckinney?
I do have a question. If we look at the site, the property adjacent 251, when I look at the, I'm looking at the sheet labeled C2, it appears that the existing residence at that address is built with the house exactly on the property line. Am I correct by that?
That's what the survey found.
Okay, and I appreciate that the property owner, it looks like, has tried to be very accommodating with the adjacent residences for easements. But I read this, the, on that adjacent property at 251, I see a six-foot grape stake fence running through that five-foot corridor. And from visiting the site, I noted that the existing residence has windows on that side of their house. A six-foot fence, do, is this, and certainly, a property owner has a right for privacy. Was that something that's being proposed, or?
So, the applicant can speak as to proposed fencing. What this particular sheet is showing is the topographic survey that was prepared, that shows existing conditions.
Okay.
So, that fence exists, whether or not it's going to be retained.
Okay.
Whether or not it's going to be retained or not, the applicant can speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Cunningham?
I, no, I don't.
Commissioner Carmel?
No.
Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. We'd like to hear from the applicant first.
Good evening, my name is Adam Biddle, I'm the architect for the project, and I'm here with the owners, Emily and Christopher Werwick. Thank you for having us this evening. You know, one thing I'll just quickly mention on this one, we have a gentle slope from the street to the back of the lot that raises about three feet. One of the main considerations for this project, as Julia mentioned, with the residential elevator, are accessibility needs for the family, and so, having a accessible path of travel from garage throughout the ground floor was the reason for us bringing that finished floor fairly close to grade and evening it out. We don't have any height restrictions or anything, but it's the accessibility requirement, that was the focus of this project. As to the fence along that side, it's likely going to come down and be replaced. They'll coordinate usually, fencings are, you know, neighbor, neighbor issues, but, yeah, they don't anticipate keeping that there. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, if anything comes up.
Any questions? Nope.
I have one. I noticed where, on the plans, what was indicated is concrete, which appears to be driveway in the front, and in the rear of the property, what looks like a back patio. Has any thought been given to, I can't remember, perhaps staff could address it as well, where you have permeable pavement? And maybe that's cost consideration, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we, at this time, more delineated hardscape versus softscape. We have not dove into the landscape design significantly. It may well end up that way, likely not the rear patio, but there's potentially options for the driveway, but obviously, budget and cost will play into that.
Any other questions? Nope, thank you. Anyone from the audience want to speak in this matter? I see no one, so, want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, can I?
Second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now deliberation, what are your thoughts?
I think this is pretty straightforward.
Okay.
I would agree, I think it's pretty well thought out. I think it's pretty well thought out.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to approve this?
I'd make a motion to approve the project at 255 Mendocino Street, grading review EX-9-17, application number 007-332-290.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. And you have, I will read the appeals process. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council. Appeals for the planning commission actions on variance applications will be filed with the city clerk not later than seven calendar days following the planning commission's decision. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Anderson is back. We will go to the next item, which is items initiated by staff. Thank you very much.
Yes, I have just a couple items. One is I don't think we've had a meeting since the city council did adopt the Parkside Plan, which was in October, so we're very excited about that. Staff is working on the implementing zoning regulations, so that will come forward to the commission, back to the commission in the very near future. As you remember, all we did was adopt the plan and the general plan amendments, but we did have to come back with the actual zoning text, so that will be coming back to the commission very shortly. There was another item that the council approved, it was one of those cleanup zoning ordinance amendments that you saw maybe in the summer, related to a number of items, solar height exceptions and whatnot. And the council, they adopted that, they approved that, but they also had a discussion about tiny home regulations and that wasn't really inappropriate, there was nothing in that particular amendment that was appropriate to do, so they did direct that sort of issue of regulating tiny homes and where and how back to the commission. So staff will be doing some research on that and coming back to you, probably not until this spring, I expect, before we get back to you. And then the last thing is that this coming Thursday, there's another city council meeting and they'll be considering the M1 rezonings that the commission recommended for northwest Bay shores. That'll be on the council's agenda for this Thursday night, and that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, the next item is an item initiated by the commission. Anyone has any things you'd like to bring it before the?
There's an item on the agenda.
Yeah, you have something here.
Beyond that.
The zoning text map and the general plan, which is, which was already forwarded to the county.
Isn't this letter in response to that?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a letter here.
Again, this was.
This is the one that stick block, that's the one?
Yes, again, just for the commission's benefit, this was an item that was put on at the request of the chair, and the background materials that are attached were prepared by the chair as well, so I went ahead and agendized it. The letter is from the representative, that's Universal Paragon's attorney, expressing some concern about the particular idea about rezoning anything in the Baylands at the current time. And so, with that, I open it up to the chair and the commission to discuss.
Do you think we should discuss that at some meeting where when people have a chance to review this and go with that? I didn't, frankly, I didn't review it very carefully.
Yeah, it just came in at about 5:30 or 6 o'clock this evening, so I apologize not getting it to you.
Because I like to give everybody a chance to review it and make comments on this thing here, so if you want, we can put this in the next.
It's the commission's pleasure. You want to continue it?
Yeah, we can continue that for the next meeting. Is everybody is okay with that?
Yes.
I agree, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, or did you have something else?
No, we don't have to make a motion for that.
Oh, you don't, okay.
Okay, what I'd like to ask John, do we have any budget for the new commissioner that came in? Because we, he has to go through training, a bunch of things that need to be done, and also the conference that every commissioner goes to.
Yes, there's a training budget, and we talked about the League of Cities Conference, which is usually in the spring. And so when we get the information, we'll pass that along and we'll try to get as many commissioners, both new and anyone who's present and on the commission who'd like to attend, if that's of interest, we'll try to accommodate everybody's desires.
Do we know where the location is?
San Francisco, I believe, this year, next year.
That would be great. I haven't seen the.
I heard a rumor.
On that. We'll look into it. I don't know, it's still about three months away, or well, more than that, four or five months away, so.
And would you be kind enough to have the new commissioners go through the little process that we have with the planning, you know, what issues are there and all of that, so that you can get up to speed?
Oh, yeah, we already, we already met and had a brief orientation, and as for all commissioners, you know, as issues arise that they want to talk to us about, or, you know, we're always open to discuss either on a case-by-case basis or policy issues. But we did provide an orientation and as well as a handbook with a lot of the basic materials, and I'm sure all the newer commissioners probably, when you started, we probably didn't have it quite as refined as it is now, but, yeah, we tried to provide a good overview of Brown Act, some basic planning issues, conflict of interest, the commission's rules and procedures, and other sort of technical access to other, you know, the planning documents the city uses, general plan, zoning ordinance, et cetera, so.
And how about the mandatory, you know?
Oh, the conflict of, yeah, the ethics training, that'll come up the next time the clerk requires that. Commissioner will be getting notification of that in terms of how that can be, you know, whether it's online or in-person courses, and same with forms that need to be filled out for conflict of interest.
Okay.
Those are all sort of pretty much baked in by the city clerk, make sure that, you know, all the commissioners get what they need and make sure they're in compliance with law.
And if you need any help or anything, then I'd be more than happy to. You can call me anytime.
Great, thank you.
And you can discuss whatever questions that you have. I'll be able to answer whatever I could.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Yes.
That's it.
I need to let you all know, this is my last planning commission meeting. So thanks for working with me, and while we got to do one meeting together, my official resignation will be in the city's office in the morning.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Yeah, good luck to you.
There's no meeting in December, huh?
There'll be a first meeting in December, I believe it's, is it the 12th or the 14th?
Correct, December 12th. However, we do plan on canceling December 26th, unless there's overwhelming protest.
The 20, 28th of this month?
Right, we will be meeting on November 28th. That'll be our next meeting.
Okay, so we must keep a meeting on Christmas Day.
Boxing Day.
Okay, so with that, who wants to make a motion to adjourn until November 28th, 2017?
I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting until the next regular meeting of November 28th, 2017, at 7:30 PM.
Okay.
I will second it.
Oh, second, that's good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving to all.